Hey Franco, you look good in that chair.
Thanks Paul.
Hey Freddie, how you doing?
Fred, when you wave, wave that way.
Jerry and Lambros, hi guys.
How are you doing?
I'm well. Doing too much traveling these days, but glad to be home.
You have any festivities going on next weekend up there?
I don't think he, turn your mic on, I don't think he can hear you.
Yeah.
Will you have any festivities going on up there next weekend?
Festivities in Serenack Lake?
Yeah.
Always, this is the place to be.
I know.
Unless you're in Lloyd.
I should have looked you up while I was up there last Thursday for the first Thursday art walk. Or third Thursday, I guess it was.
Yes, that's right, that's a, every month during the summer we do that. And then, yeah, I mean, all the summer people are starting to come back, so it's, it's pretty crazy busy. Governor's coming here tomorrow.
You sit wherever you want. You got that, right?
Yeah.
If you guys move down if you were.
I can look both ways too.
That clock's wrong, we got four minutes. How are you?
Yeah, so when, when they were looking at the roof, because I knew what had to be done. The one, the second guy came down with pictures. It wasn't running out of sand, it didn't look, it was a little deep, the sand wasn't long enough. But it was, it was there, it was only twenty, this is like twenty-four years. When you've looked at a picture of the tile, it was starting to do this, the tile was done.
Yeah. You know, I didn't even know, but the main structure of the house, which was very small. It was from the garage over. That was it, there wasn't the, there wasn't even, the living room wasn't there, it's a very small. The roof was planky, it's not plywood, it's in good shape. There were a couple knot holes where the knots were, the knots fell out of, but they just covered them with tin.
Yes. Just the front, just the front, hustled down by the roof, whoops, that's my cat.
And just what you used to, they do an update, page everything.
This way.
Okay.
So my house is on Long Ranch?
Yeah.
And then the den and the garage go out that way.
Right, okay.
It's six, it's a lot.
That's, that's a lot of room, yeah. Well, listen, when I, when I, one or two asked them, both of them said thirty-six square. So when this guy gave me that, I mean, thirty-six square, so I called him up, I said, listen, it's unfair. I wouldn't want to see you get, the two other estimates say thirty-six, just double check. This way you don't get, and I don't get, single, oh by the way, right? He goes, he goes, I've been doing it, because I know over. Estimate, he says, I've been doing it for a lot of year. He says, I'm comfortable with thirty-four. He says, I will double check, they have a way to double check, let's Google some. He says, I'm thirty-four, I said, okay. One bundle or single is left. I mean, that guy was spot on, one bundle, which is good for me, I keep a spare bundle. They were good, did a good job.
Yeah, this roof's good forever, it'll live four, three and eight.
Yeah, that's what I say, I'm not worried.
It's more fiberglass now than it is jolyum, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. I saw many years that Owens Corning, it's a.
That's what this is, this is an Owens Corning.
The felt paper was white, it's a, it's a, it's a. Synthetic felt that they use, you know what I mean? It almost looks like Tyvek.
Yeah, that's what this looks like.
Yeah, same stuff. I like Owens Corning, it's guaranteed.
Good stuff, right? Everywhere he goes.
Everybody's mic's on, Jerry, turn your mic on, we got less than a minute, sorry.
All the green.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, like to bring to Thursday, June twenty-sixth, regular planning board meeting, the order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance, Brett, please lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Three public, one to stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Some quick announcements. General no smoking, exits to the left and right, everybody, we would like to meet in the back parking lot if the fire alarm doesn't go off, so we can get a head count. There's not many people here, but we'd like to make sure that the building's empty. Alright, I'd like to officially open a meeting by, we need to prove the minutes for the June, for the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting and the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five meeting, can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, old business, Friedberg Larry's special use permit, one twenty-nine Costa Road, reuse status, his ZBA relief was granted. You'll have a letter in your packet, potential action will set the public hearing for July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Is the, is Mr. Friedberg here? Come on up. Just turn the microphone on, speak into the microphone, and just state your name.
Lawrence Friedberg.
How are you, Mr. Friedberg?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, tell us what you're doing.
Sorry?
Just tell us about your project.
So we are applying for an accessory apartment on our lot, at one twenty-nine Costa Road. It will be a one bedroom with a kitchen, living dining room, and then storage on the backside.
And solar on top.
And solar, which is probably the first motivation to do it.
That's why we, we were doing it, was for the solar.
So it's a, a little building on the left.
Okay. Alright, Paul, any questions?
No, I can tell you though, that they did get their variance from the ZBA. And as part of that variance, the ZBA required a planting plan, which you probably have as part of what's been provided to you, that will provide some screening of that building from the vantage point where you're looking towards it. I think the applicants can probably speak more to that. My understanding also is that the adjoining lands is owned by, if I'm not incorrect, a family member. So, you know, it's a little bit different than your normal neighboring property, but obviously no guarantee that it'll always been in, be in the family's same hands. Having said that, the ZBA did work really closely with applicants to try and, you know, provide some reasonable level of screening without affecting what the applicants have in terms of apparently a very nice view from their own house. So those are things that you may want to talk with them about, but we, 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 you know, unless CPL has any other thoughts on this, we could definitely see this being ready to schedule for a public hearing for next month, if the board's so, so inclined.
Okay, Christian?
We only had a few minor comments on this one, just regarding the health department confirmation that the sewage disposal system can handle this bedroom. I think it was this plan that, I think you said that it was designed for three bedrooms?
Correct.
And you only have two in the existing.
There's two in the house and there'd be one more additional.
You just need to provide, you know, verification from the Ulster County Board of that, that it was designed for three. Just verification, just maybe make sure we're not overloading that. The fire department just be consulted regarding access to that proposed structure, whether it's within that range that they can get to. Just need to, you know, demonstrate that you can provide gravity feed to that sewage disposal system. You probably have it, we just like to verify that, and I think you just.
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Just to make sure that where you're proposing the new structure, you can get gravity feed into the septic system, otherwise you'd have, otherwise you'd have to go to the health department to get approval for a pump station.
Right now, right now, it's, it's well below where it is.
And I think the last time you were here, you, we just want to know if there's going to be any walkways or paths going back to that structure, I think.
Nothing permanent, we want to just make it, you know, basically lawn.
Okay. Just if you're going to do something new, just indicate it on the plan.
It's basically going to be mowed, lawn.
I don't know if you have access to the, the planting plan that we submitted?
Yeah, we have it. Is it this one?
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, this looks like, this looks like a single sheet from, can't make out the. Friedberg Architecture and Design.
How far are they going to have to walk from where they parked to that structure, that was my question when I asked you.
Well, that is, that's, basically that's for our own family to stay there.
I understand.
So it's.
It's probably, that's why I thought maybe grass wasn't adequate, but that's, that's up to them, that's their family. It's probably around two hundred feet. It says no, no, nothing but grass.
Nothing but grass.
Nothing in between, in the winter they'll, won't come. Sorry, in the winter, snow shoes, we have snow shoes.
Alright, any other questions from the board? Alright, so. We can set the public hearing for July twenty-fourth? So you got some homework to do before that?
So let's just go back through, you need verification of the septic system. Okie dokie.
Great. Just came out today. This tells us what we need to do, okay.
Excellent, thank you.
But Dave, we need a motion, set the public hearing? Second, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, get all the information back before the public hearing, should be good to go. If there's any questions, just contact Dave Martin.
Franco, should we go ahead and plan to prepare a draft resolution for you for that meeting?
Yes, I believe that's, that's what the board is looking for.
Yes, yes, Paul.
Okay, definitely, we will, thank you.
Alright, Highland Thirty-five fifty-five LLC, site plan thirty-five fifty-five Route nine W, reduced status, updated plan circulated to the board. Seeker status, lead agency circulated on six-ten, twenty-twenty-five.
Good evening, I don't think we did circulate new maps, because we're still working on them. So basically, the circulation had occurred, we did receive comments back from the Ulster County Planning Board. We did meet with the fire department and have their review comments. We did receive confirmation from the transportation supervisor, Kathy McCulick, that the school bus pickup location would be at the intersection of Roberto Avenue. They do not pick up on nine W due to safety concerns, and they do not go down Roberto Avenue.
Okay, great.
So, the Roberto Avenue access has been formally defined as emergency only, and will remain that way unless there are comments from DOT to the contrary. So that issue has been resolved, based again on board concern, public comment, and the meeting with the fire department, the applicants agreed to that.
Okay, great.
So Dan Kohler is continuing to work with CPL to address their comments, and he's intending on having the majority of those comments fully addressed for the new submission, which is being compiled for the first week in July. I guess it's the week of July seventh, so that might be the second week. So at this point in time, since, and we have responded to the Ulster County Planning Board, provided those comments for this board to review. So at this point, we are requesting the board to consider scheduling a public hearing for July twenty-fourth.
Paul?
We think that's appropriate, unless CPL has any material comments outstanding that should be addressed before that, but I think, you know, having heard about the access issue and, and the applicant's commitment there, also the school bus issue, I think we're well on the way to addressing the board's stated concerns to date, so it wouldn't be inappropriate to go ahead and schedule the public hearing. By the time you guys have the public hearing, you'll be in a position to establish yourself as secret lead agency, so that, that won't be, you know, there's no reason to hold back because of that. Similarly, with having gotten the county comments, you're ahead of the game. So, you know, I think, I think, you know, all, all said, you're in a position where you could schedule a public hearing, and see where you are, and whether you need to continue it or not, or, you know, whether you have enough information to approve the project. That can be, you know, a wait and see.
The only question I have is, do you have an update, of course, regarding the DOT and the access off of nine W?
The perm thirty-three has been submitted, we had, have, we originally submitted it to DOT back in April, and we have been continually dialoguing back and forth to them. I think right now, the issue is with regard to what they want the radius for the curbing entrance to be, and discussing how wide the throat of that should be.
Have they made any determination or given you any direction on whether or not they're going to, going to be a right-in, right-out configuration?
They have not.
Were you going to have an updated traffic study, John, to my recollection? Or is that not something we thought was going to happen?
I was not aware of that.
I mean, we, we have provided comments on, on the traffic, so they, they weren't very substantial. I think, you know, the DOT is going to be, you know, the governing agency on that. I mean, we can offer all the comments we want, because DOT is, they're going to do their own independent review of that, because it's their highway. As, you know, I know the board had some concerns regarding, you know, cutting across that, that median that's approaching that light, whether or not that was going to be part of the plan.
And some of that, I think, I, I think you're going to want to hear from DOT for any seeker determination that the board makes, but, you know, I, I still think you're probably in a position, unless you disagree, Christian, where we could go ahead and at least start the public hearing process and make sure that the public's part of the discussion.
Yeah, I don't know that the DOT is going to offer any comments, I can't speak for them, that it's going to substantially modify the project from what the board and the public have already seen. If it's possible just to get something, even conceptually from DOT, I, I know that's kind of a big ask, because they're very reluctant to issue anything that's not the actual.
Permit.
Permit in hand, here you go.
Right.
But if, if, if.
Willing to share some of their comments, or, you know, that it's under review, something.
Even with the understanding that it's unofficial, that, you know, we are aware of this project, and we are doing our review of it. Just something that you can, you know, because you're definitely going to get some comments from the public, I'm going to assume, at the public hearing, so it would be useful, I think, for everyone if you had something more in writing, and then, you know, we're working out with, with the DOT, understanding that it's a process.
Yeah, I think one of the things that will help with DOT too, is the secondary access through Shamrock. Because then that will also give a secondary access out, that's further away from the intersection.
And has that owner been contacted regarding that?
Oh, yeah, they actually, they have a handshake deal at the moment, and they're working on a formalized agreement.
Okay.
So Patty will have an easement through Shamrock? A dedicated easement through Shamrock?
I'm, I don't know legally how they're working it out, but there's going to have to be some kind of an agreement, whether it's going to be an easement or some other type of agreement, I'm not sure.
Probably acceptable to us. Probably not an easement, probably a license. Yeah, some, some shared access.
Shared right-of-way?
Right-of-way is probably going to be too strong a term, the two independent lots, but they'll be, you know, maybe we'll call it easement for passage or something, but that's all it'll be.
That'd be some sort of reciprocal agreement.
Right.
You know, thirty-five fifty-five can go into and out of Shamrock.
And vice versa.
Probably vice versa.
And then there would have to be a maintenance agreement.
Well, no, because on, on, thirty-five fifty-five takes care of their side of the line, and Shamrock takes care of their side of the line. So there's no reason to have a shared maintenance agreement.
That is the agreement.
That would be the agreement, everybody takes care of their own.
Yeah, it's not the case where you have like a shared utility that crosses.
Right, right. So is it safe to say that we'll have something back from DOT before the public hearing?
We will definitely have something back from them, even if it's an email saying that it's under review, that they have accepted the perm, phase one. We'll be able to get something from them, so that it's clear that they're, they have been reviewing it, and we have been receiving comments since April.
Okay, anybody else from the board? Make a motion?
I have a question, Patty, because I spoke to Scott. And I see, he mentioned some of the things that were in the letter from the county. The only thing he had asked about that wasn't there. And I see he mentioned some of the things that were in the letter from the county. The only thing he had asked about that wasn't there was what's the quantity of chargers, the electrical car chargers? Because he had made mention that the county wanted more, and I don't see that in this letter.
The county didn't ask for more chargers. I believe that they asked for the power that's supplied to the site to allow it to expand is what I recall the Ulster County Plan.
That's me, I'm just going by what he had asked me. So if that's the, that's why I said I didn't see a response to that from the county, so just wanted to give you a heads up.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions from the board? And we will move to set the public hearing for July twenty fourth. Got motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you, Patty. All right, next, new public hearings. Rondon Thomas, special use permit one sixty three Pancake Hollow Road. Review status, public hearing set for June twenty sixth tonight. Potential action, open the public hearing, close the public hearing and approve the resolution. Is Mr. Rondon here? Yes.
How are you today?
Hey, tell us about your project, one sixty three Pancake Hollow.
Have your mic on.
Yeah. There you go.
There we go.
Well, it's like screen, you're good.
Perfect. So pretty much my goal is just to build a small apartment for my parents. They're retiring this year and they're they're looking to leave Queens where I'm originally from. So they want to move up here and have a more relaxed relaxed, you know, setting for their retirement. Me and my brother, we've looked for different properties around New Paltz, Newburgh, Poughkeepsie, and we've either been outbid or, you know, the property didn't, the numbers didn't just make sense to, you know, purchase something, right? So I think, you know, the line I have and the property I have is adequate to build apartment the size that they need. And I think that's why I'm here and that's my main goal, just to have a, be able to build something for my parents and my place and the land I have.
Size you're talking about? What size department? What size of apartment are you talking about?
Sure, it's about a hundred, eight hundred and fifty square foot. Right, I spread the plans with basement foundation.
Full basement?
Full basement. It has a one bedroom, living room, kitchen. The septic is all sized already for additional bedroom. The main residence has three beds and septic was sized for four, so we looked into that part.
Better max is what they dine?
Nine, nine hundred. I, you know, have its own septic?
No, it's gonna connect to the.
It's gonna share septic.
Yep. I mean, is a separate septic an option or?
How many bedroom is the main house?
Three.
Three bedroom, how big is your septic tank there?
It's twelve fifty.
Okay, so you're good for, so you're only gonna do one bedroom?
Yeah, yes, right.
Right, okay.
Yep, and I think I submitted those all those, the Ulster County DOH documents. I have my own well.
Okay.
So I'll be using the original well that's there, so.
And it'll have its own driveway?
So it it won't have its own driveway, but I have two separate entrances to the backyard. So I have on the left side, I have steps leading towards the backyard and then on the right, I also have that also. But I think down the road, I'm looking to build a paved path. Either from, most likely from the left side, since that was at least from a black top to some set of stairs towards the back. But yeah, from that side.
Okay.
Either way, it works whichever one, you know, at that point makes more sense. Either one works, but I think, you know, with the winter, I plan on building something.
No plans for pickleball court, David?
Oh, no, I.
Oh, okay.
I don't think the my parents' retirement and pickleball align, so I I'll just see at the courts.
All right, Paul, any quick, any comments?
Could I defer to Christian first?
Certainly. We didn't really have any comments on it.
Yeah.
If the septic system was designed for four and there's only three, there's that overhead. Are you gonna be feeding the new house off the existing well? Yes. Not sure if that triggers any review by county health or not. I think only if you have more than five.
That's what I thought I, that's what I asked. Does it have its own well? And I think the answer was the well is to the main house.
Right, so you're not gonna be putting in a second well just for.
That's correct. Yeah, non you will.
Okay, so you're gonna feed the one bedroom off the existing one?
Correct.
Any doubts, Chris? Uh, any questions from the board? Everybody's good? Then I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is anyone here from the public to speak on one sixty three Pancake Hollow Road? Okay, if not, what we'll do is we'll close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a, yeah, we got a resolution here. Okay, Paul, you're up.
Okay, shall I read just the resolve clauses then? Okay, so this is a type two seeker action, so no seeker review is required. It's a, a proposed project for an accessory apartment that complies with the standards for an accessory apartment provided in the zoning code. Also meets the standards for site plan review. And the resolve clauses state, now therefore be it resolved that based on the application, the findings herein and pursuant to the zoning code, the and New York State Town Law, the planning board hereby approves a special use permit for the project. Be it further resolved that pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law, the plane, planning board hereby grants site plan review approval for the project. And the chairman of the planning board is conditionally authorized to author, to sign the project site plans after satisfaction of the following conditions. The applicant shall comply with any final review comments from the planning board's engineer and payment of all fees owed to the town of Lloyd. Be it further resolved that upon execution of the approved site plans by the planning board chairman, the town's code enforcement officer is authorized to issue any zoning permits, building permits, or any other permits to allow construction on the project to proceed. Be it further resolved that this approval shall expire if the special use approved hereby expires expires for more than twelve months for any reason. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. Be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed in the town clerk's office and sent to the applicant. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. And now if you want to call for a motion and any discussion, that would be fine.
Okay, can I have a motion on the resolution as written? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No abstentions? Motion passes. All right, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, Vineyard Avenue Associates LLC site plan eighty eight ninety four Vineyard Avenue, three Milton Avenue. View status, public hearing set for June twenty sixth. Potential action for tonight, open the public hearing, close the public hearing and approve the resolution. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of eighty eight ninety four? How are you tonight?
Hello, I'm Sean Williams and the architect for the project. We've been through this one quite a few times. I think we're ready to move forward.
Great.
You gotta get in line.
It's gonna be quick. I thought we'd beat the time, but we're not gonna. All right, Paul, any comments?
Again, I would, I have no comments, but would defer to Christian and Dave for any thoughts.
Christian?
I believe we had a letter you were gonna make some modification to the plan regarding the survey.
Didn't I submit that a couple of months ago?
I think at the last meeting you said you were going to. I don't have anything new.
Okay, we're looking for an overlay of the.
Yeah, I believe there was something to do with the scaling of the property.
Thought this was your, was your ask months ago, so I'm a little, I got a loss right now.
It's okay. What I would say, Franco, is that the board can move forward and we we will confirm that with Christian and company. You know, when they come, when they come in for building permits, make sure that the two align.
Okay, great. Okay, any other questions from the board? At this point, I would ask for a motion to open the public hearing. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from the public on eighty eight ninety four Vineyard Avenue, which is three Milton Avenue?
I hate it.
Out of that note, I had a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, we have a resolution? Okay, Paul, you're up.
Yeah, and and before I start into this, should I add to it? Board slash Dave slash Christian satisfaction of any final comments from the planning board's engineer?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that. All right, so again, this is a type two seeker action because it involves the reuse of an existing property for uses that are allowed by your zoning code. You've had your public hearing. And now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant approval of its site plan application pursuant to the zoning code and New York State Town Law. And the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the approved site plan for the project upon satisfaction of any final comments from the planning board's engineer and the payment of any fees, including but not limited to recreation escrow fees owed to the town of Lloyd. And be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled, the remainder shall stay in effect. And be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed in the town clerk's office and also sent to the applicant. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
Second, all in favor? All opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a short term rental. Knee Cabin four hundred North Elting's Corners Road. Review status, inspection of the hot tub passed. Potential action, close the public hearing and approve the resolution. Is Mr. Knee?
Out on Zoom.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Good evening, Mr. Knee. How are you?
Good, how are you?
All right, so everything went according to what you needed to do. Got any other, anything else for us tonight?
Nope, just hoping to close this up.
Okay, Paul, anything?
No, I don't have anything additional. I guess the next step for the board would be to close the public hearing. If there are no public comments and then to, you have a draft resolution to consider.
Paul, I have one comment, and this is a question I thought I had last time. The application says it's a three bedroom house and we have a maximum occupancy here of eight guests. I thought it's two per bedroom. It should be six. And I thought that was resolved, but the resolution still says eight.
No, we we've resolved that. It's it's six now.
Okay, so we can change that in the resolution for you.
Okay, Christian, any comments? Okay, any comments from the board? Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a resolution to approve. Last one, Paul.
Okay, gotta make sure I got the right one here and I'll get the numbers right. Excuse me for a second. Okay. So this is a short term rental, approval resolution. It's a seeker part two app, action because it involves the use of existing single family dwelling for a use that's allowed under the zoning code. They provided a application, they've gotten their building permit inspection. So now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the STR regulations and New York State Town Law, the planning board chairman is authorized to sign the special use permit approving the use of the property for an STR with a maximum occupancy of six guests per stay upon payment of all fees, including but not limited to recreation and escrow fees owed to the town of Lloyd. Be it further resolved that after it's signed by the chairman, the use, special use permit shall remain in effect for two years and can be renewed thereafter by the code enforcement officer. Be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court, all other provisions shall remain in full force and effect. And be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed with town clerk and also mailed to the applicant. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Paul, can you fix the first whereas clause in the resolution to reflect six guests instead of eight?
Help, help me out there, Bill. Could you speak a little bit more in the mic?
The first whereas clause still refers to eight guests, so you shouldn't have.
Yeah, I was gonna pick that up. I didn't, thank you though for the reminder.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, is there any other business that should be brought before this board tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to end the meeting.
Motion.
Second? Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks, Paul.
Bye, guys. Take care. Have a good one. Come on up to Serenac Lake.